You called the order.
Yeah, welcome to this afternoon's special call meeting to address sidewalk construction issues, and we will begin just with a roll call. Melody, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Hickon-Botham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Mr. McCleskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Here.
So you've got two absent, but you've got a quorum.
All right, thank you. So we do have a quorum, and we are here to talk about sidewalks. Lovely sidewalks throughout our town. We have had prepared and passed out to everyone basically a financial outlook of money available for sidewalks this fiscal year. I don't think we're really attempting to address sidewalk projects for next fiscal year at this point, but really this fiscal year. And we also have, and I will just tell you, if you look at that financial sheet that's been prepared to everyone, and we can, we've got Melody and Robert here as well, but it's been explained to me, if you look in the top line on their sidewalks, construction budget balance is $271,322 available to spend this fiscal year, assuming all of the encumbrances to the left there of $90,001.20 are in fact going to be incurred and spent. And so, and we're assuming that to be the case, and Greg, you can enlighten on this as we go along here. So with that assumption, we'd have $271 for construction, and then you come down to the bottom half of sidewalk repairs, $100,000, and again, that is again money available for this fiscal year. So combine that with the top one, that's a total of $371,000 available for expenditure. And of course, the sidewalk repairs are also contingent on encumbrances of $11,360, which we are assuming are being incurred and spent. So that's the money picture of what we have available this fiscal year, and I know we're all here because we want to spend this money, because these are specially allocated for sidewalks, right, Melody? This money. And to follow up on that, and with an understanding of what we have left to do, where we can put this money on our existing sidewalk projects. And so, Greg, with that little introduction, and I know we have all of the sheet of the locations recommended for new sidewalks in Homewood.
This is the high priority ones list?
Yeah.
Because, you know, we have a lot of others, but this is what we narrowed it down to back a year ago, I guess, whenever it was. But I'm ready to pull the trigger on whatever y'all want to do.
All right, all right. Can you help us understand just a little bit of what we have, what projects we have left to get done of the high priority ones that are in front of us?
All those on that list need to be done, except...
Every single one of them, okay.
Except, now, it says, you see some of them in there already complete?
Yes, that's why I'm asking.
All right, the Rumsen Road doesn't say that it's complete, but it is mostly. The sidewalk is there. We're still dealing with some drainage issues. So I'm not working on anything right now sidewalk-wise.
Okay, so...
Well, it's all torn up again, but it's there. The gas company tore it up for us.
So that one's off, and make sure I'm understanding, Greg, and the other three that are marked are complete, those should be taken off, I mean, those are done?
Oh, I can take them off. I just left them on there so we could see what we've been doing.
Okay, yeah, I meant...
One, four is also complete.
Valley Avenue to Royce?
Oh, gosh. We did that a long time ago. I don't know how I missed that.
And Mr. Chairman, the Patriot Park connector is done as well.
All right, where is that?
The very first one.
Oh, Oak Grove to Hillmore?
Yeah, okay, I'll fix that.
All right, we're getting a lot done here as we sit here. This is very, very efficient.
Hey, we just spent a couple hundred thousand dollars right there.
That's where we just said.
We can't do it because ADA...
Valley to Clermont?
Oh, Valley to Clermont, okay. Okay, so, we've got one, all right, let's just kind of keep everybody in front of us. So I'm gonna go by the segment ID, if you will, which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th column. 10-11, complete, the very first one. The second one, 10-14, complete. The 10-43, which is the Rumsen Road, that's complete. And then we come down to 10-96, is complete. 10-98, completed. And 11-04, completed. Okay, so, there we are, and everybody can see the numbers of the federal and engineers' estimates, which are what they are.
Can I interrupt you really a little bit?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I just want to say about 11-04 again, Yorkshire, so we've come down, we've come down Shades Street Parkway from Rumsen, and we stopped at the crosswalk.
Right.
So the next intersection is Durham, and it's not even six feet. And then Yorkshire is the next road. I would love a little connector to Durham, but Yorkshire is, that would be late.
You want to go to Durham?
I'd rather go to Durham, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's just right there. If I'm standing at the crosswalk, I can see it right there.
Mm-hmm.
So you're just changing Yorkshire to Durham?
I'm shortening it and saving the city money.
Go to Durham, okay.
Thank you for thinking of this.
Always thinking.
Okay, Mr. Wyatt?
Greg, you're looking at 10-48, Salter. That's actually from Rockaway to South Wellington, isn't it, at this point?
Yes, sir. That one, we've got to do a lot of clearing over there to get that sidewalk in.
We do, but we do, you know, we've allocated the money for the park on Salter where Sanford's gonna tear down that house. And I think, I don't know if that will end up being done this budget year or carried over to the next budget year, or one or the other is gonna be done, and that's what that's connecting to.
At one time, I laid out a sidewalk on the south side of the road where that house is. You know, dirt goes up, real steep, and then it kind of levels out, and Sanford was gonna give us that right away at the time, and it's up there on the flat part.
Where the house is?
Yes, sir. Right when you get to the top of the hill and it rolls over.
Go away from Salter and go up and then come back down?
This was years ago, we looked at doing a park in there, and so we wanted to put the sidewalk on that side of the street where the other side is very flat.
Yeah, well, and I will say, Greg, just in the past, it feels like the past seven million years, but in the past year, Spire, Water, and Verizon have all been digging on Salter.
Mm-hmm.
So a lot of those yards on the other side from Salter, the flat side, where we were talking about going across, from Rockaway going across the street and then going down that side, and then putting a crosswalk back across the street to the park, those yards are in terrible shape because they haven't been done. So my question is, why wouldn't we do it now while there's already all of that there before they get them all cleaned up, and then we come back and say, hey, by the way, guys, we're gonna tear your yards up again?
Well, the only really bad part is that on the far west end where we stopped, there's all those hedges real close to the street, and it's gonna be real tight right there. I might take out a lot of hedges. So we've got to get...
North side of Salter?
Yes, sir. We've got to get in a minimum of four feet for ADA compliance.
Right.
We make them all five feet if we can.
The last thing you want is, you know, back because, back because having to cross Salter all the time.
Well, you've got a stop sign right there.
Yeah, but the problem is, John, the elevation on the south side, because of the steepness of that grade, there's no way. I mean, we'd have to put in, you know, a mile of retaining walls, which would cost a lot of money.
But you've got a four-way stop right there, and that's why we make the crosswalk at the stop sign.
Right. And the sidewalks already end right there at Rockaway, so there's a four-way stop, so that's where the sidewalk's in, send a thing over to the other side. I mean, it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, but...
But it's crossing at both places, it's crossing.
At an intersection.
At an intersection. It's crossing through to Rockaway, staying on the south side all the way to South Wellington, and crossing through to...
Yeah.
So we don't have to put the headers... I don't think that's where we are.
They're big ones, and you're gonna have to cut them up.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Okay, I want to stay high level before we get too detailed. Well, I just want to know where, I know, I just want to know where we are. Okay, Ms. Melody? So, in looking at this, we, so we're down to 401-790. Is that about right? If I took out those numbers, we're about $402,000. That is in the engineer's estimate.
You're talking about the completed projects?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking, no, not the completed projects, I'm talking about what's left. If I take out what is complete...
That's what I'm talking about, taking out the completed.
So we're, yes, correct, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, to take those out.
The 527 was was completed. Does the engineer's estimate agree with what you're talking about our cost is, that the other stuff is federal?
No, that's what I estimated it when I calculated it at $35 a foot, unless concrete's done something crazy lately. That's where we were.
So the engineer's estimate is the total cost?
Yes, sir.
The engineer's estimate is the total cost?
That should be the total cost. So we're talking about 401, and then we have 271.
Correct. Thank you, Walter.
So we need to either cut 130 or take out a project, or...
We got 100 in repairs.
You got 100 in repairs.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Now, in repairs, the money I've been spending that on has mainly been wheelchair ramps, and some of the...
Man, you have to...
Yes, sir, part of our ADA plan. And all these have wheelchairs in them, too? It's just not listed separate because everything is going to end with a ramp.
Sure.
And actually, our street department guys have done a really good job on one they just put on the corner of Roseland.
Yep.
That was a tough one.
Yep.
It had irrigation in the way and all kinds of stuff, and it cost us a lot more, $35 a foot, though. But they've been doing the small repairs. Now, okay, so how much, so will we spend another 100 in repairs between now and the end of the year? What's that number that you estimate?
We're not spending it right now.
We're not spending it right now.
I'm...
Hold it, hold it, hold it, I don't want to lose it. Hold on a second. Pardon me, Ms. Andrews, I just don't want to lose this.
No, dear.
Because we're just jumping off. We've got 401, assuming Walter's math is correct. We got 371...
I'm gonna pull up a sample.
371, 371 with 100 of that going to repairs. Because I wanted to hear you answer the question of repairs. Do you know, we're talking fiscal year here, so we're June to October, do you have any feel for what kind of repair money you may need, which means, better stated, how much of that repair money could possibly go to sidewalk projects?
Any way you want to do it, really. I took, I tacked this thing originally, I said, start at schools and work out. That's where we started 15 years ago.
Right, right, right.
Start at school and work out. All right, then I started on my wheelchair ramps down at the pig, all the way to the library.
I understand.
But we've got power poles in the way, so I couldn't get them in. So I was trying to have some kind of logic as to where I'm doing this stuff, and I'd like to start at all the different schools, since they're scattered all over town, and just work them way out and fix them as they go.
Well, following that plan, sticking with you here, following that plan, you know, if we're gonna use all of our, if we're gonna attempt to really tap into our sidewalk repairs, which I'm not suggesting that we do, we have a large amount of money to throw at every, just about every single one of these projects on this piece of paper.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think that's what we need to decide. It's almost a matter of which ones should not, should wait till next fiscal year is really kind of what we're looking at with arguably 371 to spend. All right, Ms. Andrews?
That's why, I didn't mean to interrupt earlier, but...
No, it's fine.
That is relevant to this.
Okay.
I had sent over a list about six weeks ago, repair work needed over Ward 5, that constituent had sent to me, and I was wondering if we had...
You sent that to me?
I did, I can resend it, but there's a lot, Ponciana, Malaga, Ascot, Ventura, Camona, Bonita. Yeah, I can resend it if you need it to. March 27.
Okay, I'll look and see what happened with that.
Did you check out the, where'd you say, Ward 5? Yeah, Ward 5.
All right, Mr. Wyatt and then Mr. Thames.
Just because you're looking at these numbers, when we change that, when we were just talking about Salter, the 10-48 to Rockaway, that's gonna pump that number up. This is gonna be longer than Rockaway, because it's the length of it. So just keep that in mind. I don't know that that's a huge difference, but just keep in mind that that project's gonna be a little more than it probably is to here right there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright, can I ask a question? I've asked somebody else to ask a question.
Mr. Thames, go wait your turn. Just staying high level, before we start thinking about our requests on the Mecca, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you taking a look at that. Is that behind the curb or in the street?
That's behind the curb. There's, I was over there last week. It's got a couple of little issues about three-quarters way up, there's a retaining wall in somebody's front yard.
Yep.
And that's one of them. The other's trees on the corner at Oxmore, and one big fat oak tree in the way, in the way, about halfway up there. On the very corner of Oxmore, there's a lot of vegetation.
Yep.
And it's like, it'd be ideal if it got down there and it came on down and connected all the little missing pieces all the way into the business district.
But it is, but it is behind the curb, so there's right of way to do it behind the curb.
Why, I asked why again, stake it, and I have not seen it staked yet, but I've been out there and found one of them, and, you know, all the new construction owners, we all try to find property owners.
Mm-hmm.
Looking to me like we've got about 10 feet of roadway behind them.
Wow.
Behind there, if that stays true all the way down the street.
And so that's, so you looked at it on the west side of the street?
The east side.
East side, okay. You're right, east side. Okay.
You wish it, the construction of the new houses on the west side.
We got them on both.
Both sides.
Both.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right.
That was my question, I just wanted to know if we even throw it in the consideration.
Well, I did find some property owners over there, but I got, I asked why again, stake them out, not every corner, for all the paper, all that, and the pendant sections, you've given me a couple each end, so I can see where they are. And then gonna have to stake the curb, so I don't know where it is. But he hadn't done it last, I looked at it, I was over there just at the end of last week.
Mr. President, Wright?
Hold on a second, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, sorry. Ha ha, jumped.
No, I do, I have a question.
The very last item is South Lake Shore from the high school to the soccer field parking lot.
Yes, sir.
The greenway already goes from the high school to the soccer field parking lot, pretty easily, actually.
Does it?
Yeah.
The greenway trail's on the other side of the creek from there, isn't it?
Huh? I mean, you go straight down a little path from the parking lot, from the soccer parking lot, I know this because I walked there yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
You go directly onto the greenway, and then you can walk all the way to the high school, which is exactly what I did.
Okay.
You get right up there and get off at the baseball field, yeah. So my question is, would we need another set of, another sidewalk section if the greenway already accomplishes that connectability?
Is it ADA compliant to get there?
I would assume if it's our greenway that it would be.
No, I mean, to get from the soccer field to the greenway.
I mean, there, yes, there is a way to get there that is ADA compliant. I mean, not by the little gravel path, obviously, but you can go around the other way, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking because I, it seems to me it would be redundant to put a sidewalk in when the greenway accomplishes what that does.
Yes. And, hey, I'll put them wherever you want them, they don't make any difference to me.
Well, I just figured that's $39,000 that we...
What I've been doing is giving them where to go. These smalls, you don't have to bid, but I take bids anyway, just keeps all my clean. And I don't, you see a lot of the same contractors, because there's a couple of them that are real neck and neck, but I make them give me a bid anyway in writing so that I've got some backup. Anybody questions?
I'm new around here, obviously, but the impression I get is we have these meetings, and Mr. Cobb, we're telling this, and we're telling that, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of priorities. And to me, we're never gonna get anywhere if we, we've got 31 flavors here, and we've gotta pick a chocolate or vanilla or something. How do we prioritize this and say, okay, Mr. Cobb, by September, we want this done? I mean...
Well, I think we're, this is the priority sheet.
This is the priority. There's four more pages to this.
We start by not giving anything to Ward 5.
I know.
Perfect, so...
You got to go through her, though.
Take all the Ward 5 projects out, we can do all the remaining ones, and you can start going straight down the list. No, seriously, John, that is part of the, I mean, that's, I mean, the good part here is we really don't have much to fuss over here, okay? This is the good, this is a very helpful list Greg has, which we've been weeding down for about 10 years now. And we've got arguably 300 and something thousand bucks to throw at $400,000 worth of projects, because that's almost like the $100,000 hole to fix for June until October. We can do that, we can figure out which one of these, and again, there's lots of movement here, some of the projects require a little bit more because they're, maybe it's another street, another block, some of them require a little less, but we need to go ahead and start knocking these out, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, even if we just get $250,000 worth out of here today, okay? And so, well, and that's, and it's really up to, you know, what we can do, if we want to, I mean, each ward, let's, you know...
Well, can I, if we knock that...
I mean, we can get most of them done.
If we knock that $39,000 off of 401, that gets you down to about $360,000, which is under the amount that we have to spend.
It is, assuming...
You can take Valley to Clermont off, can't do it today yet.
All right, so there we go.
Thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
All the way you want to do it one day somehow.
And you got a fiscal year coming up next year.
And then, back to Alex's point, yeah.
The 10-49 can come off. Now, the 10-48's gonna be a little more expensive, but 10-49 can come off Sylvia to Lakewood.
Right, because Sylvia's already to...
So can that totally come off?
Yeah, because Sylvia's already to Rockaway.
We already have one from Sylvia to Rockaway.
Right.
So we just took $65,000 plus, so... Thirty-one thousand.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm about to...
And 39,000.
So does that mean we can do everything on this list?
That means we can do about everything on this list. Whoop, let's see, I'm about to have a list here.
Sixty to 130, that's walking out some mouth over here.
Boom, that is a big deal.
Okay.
Right, so we're changing...
No, can you...
Some of that money's gonna come up to 10-48.
But I think we got plenty in this amount, okay? I think it's where we are, guys, and that's very helpful. Just knocking these two or three off and adjusting these three or four, I'm sorry, Mr. Hickon-Botham, you have something to say?
I was gonna let you finish your thought.
Okay, well, okay, and I'm running this through, 1, 2, 3, 4...
266, 610.
5, 6.
I see seven projects.
He's got the number.
266, 610.
Can we list, can we list them out and...
We will, we will. We're gonna give each one, oh, I'm sorry, I did. I've got them circled here, so I'm gonna give them to you. Okay, and Walter, let's see if you and I are on the same page on the ones we're identifying, and then we'll let Mr. Hickon-Botham add.
Yeah.
All right, I've got...
10-48.
It's 10-48, which is gonna be a little different number, which we, but it's gonna be, and we're just gonna go ahead for practical purposes, take 10-49 off, understanding 10-48's gonna be a different number, but it'll be what it's gonna be. Next will be 10-69, Shades Creek to Devon.
No, 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 remember? That's, that's, we can go to Durham, are we, I mean, are we going to Devon?
I think.
Oh, I did, I mean...
That's where you said you wanted to go.
No, we're gonna go to Durham. I mean, I'd love to go to Devon, is that...
Oh, I think you said Rumsen to Durham. Okay.
No, it was Shades Creek, Rockaway to Devon.
Okay, well, then, we have to...
If we've got the money, let's go to Devon, but...
It's actually gonna be less then, correct?
Durham is like six feet away, Devon is two more streets over.
So the point is, the cost of that project's gonna be less then, correct?
Well, now, yeah, the numbers are a little old, but they're not that old, but the problem is, when you go down through there, you're also gonna be looking at drainage.
Okay.
Okay, so that number's gonna go off the charts when you start putting drainage pipes in.
Unless you stop at Durham.
Let's just stop at Durham and then pick it up next year.
The other piece will take you all the way down to our other crosswalk.
Okay, all right. Can we, can we stop that project at Durham to keep that cost under control for purposes of completing this this fiscal year? Can we do that, Mr. Cobb?
Sure.
All right, so that's project number two.
Okay, what was number one?
Number one...
10-48.
10-48.
Rockaway to...
10-41. We need a highlighter.
I want to go to Devon.
Hey, Melody, can you throw me that highlighter?
10-69's gonna be two. Next is gonna be 10-96, which is 25th Court South to 27th Avenue South, excuse me. No, I misspoke. It's gonna be 10-94, 26th Avenue South to 28th Avenue South. That's gonna be the third one.
No, it's been done to...
Yes, B.M. Montgomery.
Which one is that, 10-94?
Is that not right?
Did everyone slash power?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get through this list one time, okay? One time, we'll let everybody, let's just get through it one time.
I got you, I got you, I got you. I'm going, I'm on Shades Street Parkway, I got it, okay, okay.
Next is gonna be Lancaster, Roxbury Road to Highway 31, that's gonna be your fourth project. Then we're gonna have, the next one is, I guess that's Hampton Drive, Devon to Windsor, 11-4. I mean, that's how much it costs. And then we have the Mecca, Peerless through Oxmore, 35-1. That's it.
Yeah.
We got enough money to get these done.
Hey, Peter, I missed, President Wright, I missed the third, the third one, 10-48, 10-69, what was before Lancaster?
10-94.
10-94, thank you.
All right, all right, so I've gone through it one time, we can butcher that, however. First of all, I owe Mr. Hickonbottom the floor, and then, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe a premature question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I'm feeling a little under the gun now. So, I know we've identified the projects we're doing within this fiscal year, pretty much knocked out the rest of this sheet. So that will take care of, of all the high priority. Obviously, we've got a huge number of things that were all just lumped in as medium priority. In terms of process, what is our plan for revisiting those? When will we revisit those? Is it going to be during the budget cycle? Is it going to be after the budget cycle? Or, I'm just trying to get your thinking.
You know, first of all...
Because once we get rid of the highs, we need new highs.
Again, we can play it up by ear, you know, we'll have a budget, we'll have some budget decisions here. Budget won't be approved until really the, the end of the election, you know, sort of the transfer of a new council. We can perhaps revisit, have a work session before the new council comes in, but I would think this would be something based on a budget, a budget that's going to have to be approved. And I would think the new council, whoever that may be, will want to consider an immediate work session to take up new projects, okay? And then Greg can start all over again, so.
Can I? Well, I'm, I'm, I was under the impression I still have the floor.
Can you get able to make for a second?
I was just simply going to make the observation that the budget will be done a good bit before the new council takes, actually...
It's November.
Seated, yes. And so, I see no reason not to move ahead and look at, because if...
No objection to that at all, if you're asking me, so.
Well, I'm just going to be as blunt as I can be. No one here, it's a secret to no one here, that I want to see some projects south of Lake Shore make it into this list at some point, and I...
You want your driveway paved, is that what you're saying?
I was hoping, I was hoping, also, my house leveled up to the driveway, so it's not like going and climbing the Himalayas. But, no, I just, you know, I want to, I just wanted to have an understanding, since we're going to get through this list, and it's always been about, well, you know, it's not on the high priority list, so we can't talk about that. I want, I would love to be able to talk about it.
Alright.
At some point before...
Understand what we're trying to do here. We have a list, we need to get these, we want to get this knocked out, because that's really what the consensus has been.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's why I said I'm going to let you finish your thought, because I think we've already agreed to that. I mean, we're on board for that, I'm just saying what comes next.
And after we have a fiscal budget, I have no objections at all, you know, moving forward for another work session as soon as we can, I have no problem at all. I was trying to show deference to the new council, but I have no problem doing it with this council, frankly, so.
Well, and the other observation I'll make about that, Mr. Chairman, is as you well know, I mean, we've had all these things on the high list, but, but the council itself decided which one it would move on this year, next year, the following year. So I don't think we're taking away any authority of any new council by saying, here's a list of things we think are important.
I was just...
You do with it what you want.
I was giving you my thoughts on it, no problem. Alright, Mr. Walton.
Mr. Cobb, I was going to ask you, do you recall that last poll that they relocated in BM Montgomery?
Last time I looked, there was one pole still in the way, but I spent a week or two, a couple of weeks ago.
I've been harassing the Campbell Company, Mike told me they transferred.
I saw, I saw them out there a week or two ago, but I, as soon as they get those poles out, I'm going to knock that thing out.
I'll double check.
If we'd have got them to move the poles, we could have had the county pay for it.
Everybody take a sigh.
I know, we're exactly, which one he's talking about, because the greenway does the exact same thing, accomplishes that goal. The greenway goes from the high school to the soccer park. I have no idea, I don't know where that came from, but that's why.
This has just been added on this past year.
By my, that was the case.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem a need to spend $40,000 for something that already exists.
Sure.
So, that was, that was my point there.
Okay, so, I think we have a list of projects, Greg, for you to go spend money on.
I need a case of spray paint and I'll be ready to go.
Do we need, you want, do we dare, well, we've got time, we want to go over them, everybody want to?
Yeah, I think we ought to go over it one more time, so everybody understands what, where our priorities are.
So you're going to be over budget by a little bit unless you take South Lake Shore off.
Okay. Alright, Greg, let's, let's go over them.
I'm going to make sure I just take that one off.
Let's, y'all, come on. Alright, let's, let's go over them, so we have a list for everyone to follow. Greg, I guess you, I hope it's consistent with your highlighted list. Alright, project one was 1048. That's going to be number one, correct? And the next one, we have 1069, Shades Creek Parkway to Durham, that's two.
So that's not, Greg, that's not Rumsen Road, we're trying to extend the long chain.
No, that's just the name of the project.
Okay, it's just a real short.
Yeah, I mean...
That's the other bill, not even have a third party, you get a third contractor, just put in another contract up there.
Well, you've got to get them close together for economy. The way they sell concrete, you've got, you've got to put your stuff together.
Alright, number three is 1094, BM Montgomery Street, 26th Avenue South to 28th Avenue South. Number four is Lancaster Road, Roxbury to Highway 31. Number five is Hampton Drive, Devon to Windsor. And number six is Mecca Avenue, Pierless to Oxmore, one, two, three, four, five, six. And we've got sufficient money, and my guess is we'll have money left over.
I don't know.
We'll see. Okay, I was hopeful thinking. Alright, okay, guys, we... Correct.
We're really going to... We're making good headway on ADA stuff, and that's all we have to do is show them that we're making good progress.
Are you, are you planning on spending, you are planning on spending that $100,000 or pay your stuff thing now in the end of the year?
Well, I really don't know about that. I'm going to get with the streets department first and ask them how many they're going to do in-house, I'm going to take the list that Ms. Andrews sent to me, and say, okay, guys, how many are you going to do and how many are I going to do? Because they have a different budget and, you know, if they'll work with me. They could just have to do them when they can, because they're always shorthanded and stretched out. But I got, like you see these three contractors I got listed on here, I'll get a bid from every, each one of those real quick. And so I might can have two or three parts going on at a time, if there's different contractors. They run so close neck and neck in price that I've seen them as much as a dollar a foot difference between the two bids.
Well, we've actually, we actually rolled over $11,360 from an encumberment I had the year before, which is still out there, but we really haven't spent any money, so that's why I was asking if you thought you were going to spend some.
I'm going to try. I'm going to, go get me a case of spray paint and start laying them out, calling contractors.
Alright, Mr. Jones.
I was going to address Mr. Hickonbottom, when you were, when you were asking about that, my, my intention is to determine what a possible recommendation would be, both from the mayor's office and from Berkeley and from you, as to what you feel like we could accomplish next year. And that needs to be part of, I would say that needs to be part of budget hearings, so that we lock that in with a new budget. And we have really done, I mean, we've been aggressive with the sidewalks, and I mean, I'm very proud.
You know, there's three more pages of this that we've already done.
Yeah, yeah, there's three other, right, and a large number of miles. I remember one time you came up with a number of miles, and it was...
I figured it out one time.
It was staggering, the number of miles, and, and so, people request this. So, I don't know if we'll be able to do the $700,000 that we budgeted for this fiscal year, but we just need to figure out what the, you know, what's on the medium list, determine what that amount is, and then, and then work, like you said, work through that, and if anything on the load needs to go up, or we don't, hopefully, we'll get everything done here. But, those are my thoughts, kind of, as we, I want a plan for next fiscal year.
Absolutely. And Greg, do we, Kim, I know, you never know what you uncover when some of these projects get underway, as always, but hopeful thinking that we can get these six projects done?
If I, I can lay them out and I'll just see if I can get to it. How hungry are they? They want to come to work.
Okay.
I'll tell you what was funny, I think that tomahawk and bulls were running so close neck and neck on those prices, it was unbelievable. I think they were only about $2,000 apart on the Patriot connector, you know, so. That's how we managed to get our price down, if we go, went to some of these smaller contractors, and they don't have so much overhead.
I know you checked at some point, maybe a year or so ago, and it was more expensive than we thought it'd be, but why don't you get them to quote the Oker, Oker tent also, and if it's, if there's no huge upcharge, maybe look at doing them that.
Yeah, they had a crazy number on that. And I was surprised, they charge you a pile of money because they have to go clean the truck out, get all the color out of it before they put another load in it. That's why they charge them much. The tent itself doesn't cost anything, it's cleaning up the truck.
I'm going to ask you a question, is the guy who complained about the curb, they did along Rumsen, three tires, and I know it busted on...
We've got some bad drivers, don't we?
How do we make those curb versus a 90 degree?
No, we can roll them over. They'll all be rolled, they're all rolled over except that one.
Yeah, they did, they did, they did something along Rumsen that added or something. Between, between Yorkshire and Windsor, man.
It's square edged.
It's square, and I did it, I busted one, my daughter busted one, my brother-in-law busted two, so they're four tires.
So, are we saying we are getting that, that softened, or...
You can't roll it over now unless you grind it, and then it's going to be slick, looking polished.
So what can be done about that, if anything?
We could have somebody grind it, that was the only way to do it. That's just grind a rollover on it, but...
So, we can do that, I mean...
Yeah, sure, that's my problem.
Okay.
We can, the last time I, the last time I asked, I was told it was $11,000, is that right?
Was it $11,000?
That's what it was.
I don't think it looks good, because when you grind concrete, now you expose all the aggregate and it's slick. Like, what they've done, some things in Mountain Brook that I don't like, when you've got sidewalk that's mismatched where tree roots pop it up, where they grind it. The only problem is, now you've got a slick spot. So, I mean, it's slick, as slick as this tabletop.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll let the Ward 5 folks talk with Greg about that, and maybe we can look at a sample or something, so we can make a, an open-minded decision on whether to go forward with that or not, okay?
Well, we can get it priced again and, and see what, what they come up with, it's not that long a section.
Alright, it sounds like it's not a, okay.
I'm just telling you, it's all handwork and it doesn't look that pretty when you finish, because...
Did they add a, a rolled curb on from Yorkshire down to, after the fact or something?
It was, no, it was all rolled when it was put in, from Yorkshire all the way down to Shades Creek Parkway.
I thought it changed.
It is a little tool, it's got a little roundover tool, that's the reason how it stays so consistent.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's been the most efficient sidewalk work session, because we, I think it was about our third one, we've tried this, but maybe the third one's the charm. So we've got six projects, we've got money to go get it done, so we're going to get it done.
We have him back in two months and give us the progress update?
We can...
That's no problem.
We can do that, me and Dave, we've got to...
We, we can, I'll just update them on this list as they finish.
We'll be, we'll be seeing them every two weeks, so.
Mm-hmm, there's no problem.
Okay, anything further on our work session? Okay, you all can talk amongst yourselves, we are adjourned.